We'll do a call of meeting order and the city clerk to call the rule please.
Mayor Hoffaugh.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lola.
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt. Councilmember Drieho.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop. Member Forman.
All right, we've got public comments on items 4.1 through 4.3. I don't think any of these weigh. This is saying 4.1, 4.3. But these are, I think this is not agenda items for later.
They're not pertinent to the closed session items, Mayor.
Yeah, I think the, I think, I think the numbers on here. Huh? Right, yeah, but I'm saying this is 4.1, but I think it's actually a later number. So we'll, we'll get to that when we get to that then, okay? All right, so there's, doesn't appear that any of these are actually covering 4.1 through 4.3. So presentation by the city attorney, please sir. Everybody shut your, they only hold so many at a time.
Well, you can relay that there are no additional items on the agenda other than the three that will be discussed in closed session this evening.
City attorney reports the only items that are going to be discussed are the three items listed on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, go to closed session.
Members of the City Council were present, either in person or remotely, and were able to participate in all of the matters. With regard to item 4.1, City of Palmdale versus Rodney Bruce et al., the City Council was provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office. There is no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item 4.2, California Smoke and Vape Association, Inc. et al. versus the City of Palmdale, the City Council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to the City Attorney's Office. There is no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item 4.3, Public Employee Appointment, Interim City Attorney, in a closed session, the City Council discussed and approved the appointment of Noel Doran as the interim city attorney, beginning on July 6, 2020, and ending upon the appointment of the new city attorney or until future action of the City Council. The vote was four to one with Councilmember Correa voting no. There is no further reportable action at this time, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will adjourn the closed session meeting, and we will call to order the seven o'clock meeting, and go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence.
Thank you.
City Clerk roll call, please.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Potem Vice Chair, Chair Potem Loa.
Here.
Councilmember Director, Member Bettencourt.
Here.
Councilmember Director, Member Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Director, Member Bishop.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, item 11. This is a proclamation I ask for the mayor and the council to present to the Outreach Center. And with June being LGBTQ Pride Month for the city of Palmdale, Mr. City Manager, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
Oh, okay.
You want my reading proclamation?
Yeah, or, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, well, you know what? It's in transit someplace, I think. Anyways, it just speaks about, and especially considering the Supreme Court decision on LGBTQ issues, I think that that was quite timely, and I appreciate us getting that thing put together in a timely manner. Okay, so we need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loa, a second by Mr. Correa. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Vice Chair, Chair Potem Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bettencourt. Councilmember Director, Member Bettencourt.
There's an awful lot of noise, like stuff going across the tables there, so I'm hoping you called my name.
Yes, we did, for roll call.
Yes, I'm voting yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bishop.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, number 13, public comments received and consent calendar and non-agenda items. Do we have any consent calendar comments?
None.
No consent calendar. Okay, I have 43 public comments. They're all nearly identical. The primary topic on these is the investigation, call for the investigation into, independent investigation for Robert Fuller's death, which is exactly what we asked for. And we've got some additional partners with the county supervisor and the state senator and the Assemblyman Hall asking for the same thing. And then the sheriff subsequently said he welcomes the outside insight and oversight on this. There was a question about investigation of video footage. So I know that they're looking at the businesses that are around here. And there's no footage on the city building, so I don't know what else to say about that. There were several comments to get a second or independent autopsy. I think that that is in the works. There was a comment about asking it to be looked at as a federal hate crime. I think that's the purpose of the FBI Civil Rights Division, and I'm glad that they are looking at this. Call for civilian oversight, Sheriff's Department has that. One for defunding the police. And there was one that was critical of LAPD, but they have nothing to do about this. It's LA Sheriff's Department. So that essentially is what the comments were there. So. So kind of in response to that, our city is listening to the community, and we join them and the Fuller family in a demand for the truth and for a full and thorough investigation into the tragic death of Robert Fuller on June 10th. We're committed to transparency in every aspect of this investigation. To date, the city has worked hard to make sure that a thorough investigation is being conducted. On Saturday, the city of Palmdale reached out, developed a coalition of legislators, including State Senator Wilk, Assemblymember Lackey, and LA County Board Supervisor Chair Barker, in calling for the state Attorney General Javier Becerra to step in and oversee an independent and thorough investigation into the death of Robert Fuller. This is happening now, and both the state Attorney General and the FBI Civil Rights Division will be fully engaged in this investigation. The city has also requested the Sheriff's Department to immediately review and memorialize any and all cameras and video footage from facilities around Ponsonlon Square, in the vicinity of Ponsonlon Square. Palmdale city leaders are in contact with the family's attorney, and we are working collaboratively to ensure this case is handled appropriately. The city of Palmdale is committed to full transparency and will continue to provide updates to the community. The City of Palmdale is committed to a full, to full transparency and will continue to provide updates to the community as new information becomes available. We want to thank the community for the passion and pursuit of justice in this matter and let you know the City of Palmdale, we hear the residents, and we continue to stand with you united in support of your voices. So, that's that. All right, so we got a consent calendar here. Anybody want to pull anything off the consent calendar from the council?
Fourteen, three, fourteen, four, and fourteen, five altogether.
To, to pull off?
Yeah, to pull, to.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Any from?
Nothing, nothing from me.
Mr. Bishop?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Bettencourt?
I'm good.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve fourteen, one and fourteen, two?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa, second by Mr. Correa.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a question on these?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions. One is, um, is there going to be a vote by mail? In other words, a universal vote by mail in November? Is that where we're headed?
So, um, I have been in contact with the County of LA who we are consolidating with, and they have indicated so far that they're planning on doing some vote centers and vote by mail.
Okay, kind of like at the primary then?
Yes.
And, uh, do you know, uh, what the percentage of vote was that voted by mail as opposed to going to the vote centers in March?
No, I do not have that information, but I can certainly check into it and provide you with it.
Does that, does that reduce in any way the funds that are budgeted for that? We're allocating five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that?
Yes, and that is the, the golden question. Will it be reduced? And I haven't, um, I know that the county has heard that from many cities, questioning if we are going to eliminate some of the vote centers and some of the cost. Will it reduce their bill at the end of, you know, the election when they submit their bill? And at this time, I haven't heard anything. I think they are addressing it. Um, but they did already go ahead and put in that, that voting system, and we are, you know, the, everyone's trying, they're allocating the pro rata share to all the cities who are consolidating for that voting system.
Okay, now is this five hundred and twenty thousand the same amount that was budgeted back when people were voting in precinct houses?
No, it has increased.
It's increased?
It has.
Wow.
Funny how that works. Okay, all right, so, uh, so my question, and I could never get an answer when I tried asking our state and county representatives this question. Um, in the future, is there going to be at least the appearance of some equitable distribution of these vote centers? Because there wasn't one vote center west of the freeway that I was aware of. And, and in our city, and I don't know about neighboring cities, but, um, uh, the, the closest one we got into District Two was about a block into District Two, you know?
And I had brought up the same issue.
Yeah, and this has been brought up by a lot of people, so.
Right, and, um, we have actually a city clerk summit where we were, we are going to be meeting with the County of Los Angeles, planned later this afternoon, and I believe myself and several other city clerks are going to be addressing that very issue, um, because we've heard that, that, um, the vote centers were not, um, spread out enough. And, um, during the process, I believe that when they were doing full vote centers, there was a lot of, um, last minute trying to secure because everyone was unsure about it, what, because of the times, and you know, usually the polls open from seven thirty to eight, and I think there was a lot of confusion in that regard. But it was their first, um, time they used vote centers, and then of course, you know, in the preliminaries, it was limited to select vote centers and, um, vote by mail. So I believe that, um, some of that is just working out the bugs for the county.
So it's not just the vote centers, it was the drop boxes. Closest drop box to my house was this fire station across the street from City Hall.
Thing that was, that was throughout the city, I mean, my voting area was all the way to County jurisdiction, all the way to, uh, the park on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, when you say that they were on the east side, it'd be nice to know how many voting centers are actually within city limits as opposed to they were on the east side, because some, my, I had to go over to the county, uh, to, to be able to vote. So we can get answers to the locations where they're going to be, and which ones are they going to be in city limits.
Hey Becky, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi Laura.
I, um, now, in the past, people used to be able to be a vote center where you could open up your garage, um, and they could, I, I mean, I voted in people's garages before. Are we not doing that anymore, or are people just not signing up to do that?
I think because of disability, um, access and those type of things, that they decided to go to a, a, and then the opportunity to open up a vote center for a longer period of time, four days and sometimes eleven days depending on the vote center. I, I believe that they wanted to go to that.
Some will only open them on voting day itself, though.
Yes.
That was a problem, too. People were confused.
There was a, a lot of, um, confusion, but I, I believe that that's the model that the county wanted to go with, wherein, um, citizens were allowed to vote for a longer period of time than just one day.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, we have an increased amount of money allocated for conducting the election for fewer voting places.
Correct.
Sounds like the county model to me.
Yeah, and, and not only that, but I mean, large swaths of the city not even having a place to go vote. I, I, I just don't understand the connection, and I understand why we're going to be paying more for this election when, when we have less opportunity really for people to physically vote. I, I, I think that a lot of people, you know, just by tradition and by custom, go to the polling booths to vote. They feel that that's the way to vote. Things have changed, and, and I understand things have changed. But I just don't understand how we get fewer voting places and more cost.
You can stand in line for forty-five minutes to get into Sam's Club. You can stand in line to vote, right?
Maybe part of the question why the cost increases is because of the cost of technology.
That's the one.
Technology, the new system, uh, using in voting. Maybe that has something to do with it, but I, I do get your point. I mean, there's less, less locations, but part of the question again may be the cost offset of the new equipment.
Did you express all, you, you hear the collective concerns?
I, I hear all the concerns, and I will express those to the county. I think they have been expressed, but I will again express them at our clerk summit.
Can you a letter?
You know, that's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Well, they, well, they, um, or have they submitted, uh, an explanation of the increase in cost and how they justify that?
They have. We questioned it right out of the gate when we got their invoice or their projection for what the cost would be. We questioned it immediately. Um, a memo was sent out, um, explaining there, with their explanation as to why. And as, um, Councilmember Correa mentioned, um, a lot of it is because of the new voting system that they put in place, and so they want everyone to share in those costs.
So what, what is, what is that in comparison to? I mean, we consolidated with the county, uh, because it was going to supposedly save us money. What is, what happens if we go to an in-house vote? Can we get a, can we get an estimate on that before, uh, before we get to a drop dead date?
An in-house vote?
Yeah. It, it, uh.
You mean conduct our own election?
Exactly, yeah.
The city clerk's office, as we used to do, right?
Yeah.
Can we still do that?
I don't think so. What's happened?
I thought that's part, isn't that what the Voters Rights Act prevents us from doing?
Right. We're moving to, um, Noel, I'm not sure if you know, but, um, we're moving to, uh, November, June election, and they're asking for consolidation.
I know that we have to be, uh, uh, on the, you know, with, with, in, in the presidential election time or the, um, um, let's see, the primary, whatever the CRVA, the CVRA required. But I don't think it requires us to, to be at the, uh, consolidate. It just says that's what it needs to be.
Maybe one, one thing to consider before you know, is if we had a special election and we're not part of the countywide, then I would assume that the cost for the city to conduct a special election may be more expensive. Not that that happens all the time, but maybe it's something to consider as well.
Good. Could I ask the city attorney, um, with the time limits that are imposed prior to an election, is there still time for us to set up our own, uh, election process?
Uh, to be honest with you, I, I don't know, sitting here today. Um, I mean, certainly I can get with the city clerk tomorrow. We can look into the, the timelines, um, and, and what it would take to operate our own election and report back to the, the City Council.
Can we, can we do that in as timely a manner as possible?
Okay.
It's okay, but, uh, so we, we would continue fourteen, three, fourteen, four, and fourteen, five until we have some answers?
I will tell you this, that the City of Lancaster did a standalone election, is what it's called, and they requested that they go to all vote by mail for that election.
That was in April?
That's the one where you, you talked about going to the different locations to cash your ballot, excuse me.
Okay, when, when is it that the county needs these resolutions from us?
Soon, by July, I think their deadline was July thirteenth.
Okay, so we still have the July meeting to.
But July meeting is the fourteenth, the day after. Shaking her head back there.
It's July fourteenth.
I'm sorry?
The next council meeting, mayor, is July fourteenth.
The day after.
July, we always do, skip a week, go to the second week, so we wouldn't make, meet the deadline, so.
Well, we could, theoretically, couldn't we have a?
This is, these resolutions are saying that we're going to call election and that we're asking the county to consolidate. I believe that we could go ahead, call our election and, um, our, put in place our candidate's regulations. And then if, uh, you made a decision not to consolidate, we wouldn't send the resolution.
So there's a, there's a point where we can?
We are.
Pull it back?
They want it by July thirteenth. They would like us to send the resolutions in, um, so that the county can put it on their calendar to allow us to consolidate. The board of supervisors.
Mayor, can I propose that you address this tonight? We do not forward to the county. Noel and Becky and staff work on what the options could be, and we'll present that. And if we have to come back and either rescind or call a special meeting, we can do that.
So you're asking us to approve this conditionally? I, I, I'm not comfortable doing that.
The, the problem I see is we don't have another meeting scheduled. And unless we call a special meeting to have them in, in time, we, we have a presidential election coming up. Um, so I'd like to get the information that we heard for the first time tonight, but it's going to take a couple of days, you know, probably a week to get that to you. Um, and then if you're provided that information and you decide you want to do an alternative, we could always come back. What we're saying is, we're not going to send this, and then we would call a special meeting, rescind these, and put new resolutions in front of this body.
Fourth of July is on a Saturday.
The city will observe it during a workday, so.
What's that?
The city will observe it during a workday, so that puts less time for stop to work on it, if we ended up doing a special council meeting.
Third of the, third of this. So, so we have, we'd have, we'd have a day off on like the third or the sixth, or they'd be just be given an optional day somewhere in there?
What's the first Tuesday?
For observe, during, because theoretically, you know, two weeks from now is the thirtieth of, uh, June, we could theoretically, you know, we, we look at it every two weeks anyhow, we could, if we had to have a special meeting, we could do it that day. And so do we want, do we want to push it forward, and then if we, i- if we're, if we don't get a good discussion or if you pull the council for the need for a special meeting, uh, to rescind it? Would that be the other way to go, or do you think the better way to go would be, um, um, hold off on the, on the, uh, resolution, um, consolidating until we get those answers and, and just call a special meeting, because we can do the special meeting remotely?
I'd, I'd rather hold off until we get some answers. I'm still on the fence until we get more information, and it seems like the timeline is really.
I, I agree. You know, and I disagree, because realistically, if you're going to ask the county, there has to be some process uh, to have the city hold its own election. I don't know what the process is, but I'm sure that it may have to be ratified by the county or somebody else, if not the state. Um, so I don't, I doubt that we would have the time to have the city run its own election, again, not knowing what the statutes are. But I doubt that we would be able to do it within three months without going through a county or somebody else's.
Oh, we, we don't know, it's speculation. So do we want to approve thirteen, fourteen, three, and fourteen, four at this time?
I make a motion to approve him as presented.
Okay, I have a motion for fourteen, three, which is the, uh, declaring, declaring for the general election, and, um, fourteen, four, regarding, um, the, uh, changes and stuff for the candidate statements. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Correa, second by Ms. Bettencourt to, uh, approve fourteen, three, and fourteen, four. Uh, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
No.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Wait a minute, uh, my understanding is that we're approving this tonight. I think what we should do is have a special uh, meeting set on June thirtieth or thereabouts. That'll give us enough time to get sufficient information to vote intelligently on this issue.
Three, three is just calling for the election, and fourteen, four is candidate statements. This is not fourteen, five. Fourteen, five is consolidation.
Okay, I thought we were.
Yeah, no, I thought we pulled, five is still up.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll change my vote to yes.
Okay. Sorry, Becky.
Okay.
Keep up with us.
Oh, sure. Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. So fourteen, five, uh, is the, what's the, what's the desire of the council? This is relative to the, um.
I'd like to make a motion on fourteen, five.
Okay.
Well, can you guys discuss it in detail a little bit before we make a motion? Does someone that could present information on this?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we postpone this matter to June thirtieth at a special election, I mean, a special, uh, meeting of the City Council.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that is approved as presented by, by staff.
What's that?
I made a substitute motion to approve it as presented.
Okay, so we have to take the substitute motion first? Um, is there a second to this, if, if it's seconded? Is there a second to the substitute motion to accept it as presented by staff?
Well, okay, what was the question again? I'm sorry. You guys are confusing me.
Mr. Correa made a substitute motion, uh, to, um, to, um, to prove it as presented.
I will second that.
All right, so let's, do a roll call, vote, please, on the substitute motion.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Loa?
No.
Um, Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
We have three votes of yes. The item passes.
So where does that leave us at this point, then?
Does pass.
I know, got that part, but i- is that the end of the issue?
That's it, yeah, so you have to do the substitute motion when it comes up. So, uh, everybody, apparently the majority of council is comfortable with the way the last election ran, I guess, I don't know, okay. All right, so I'll move on to fifteen, and we'll call all agencies to order. Uh, city clerk?
So we'll take a roll call. We, um, you want to bring up the housing authority members? Or do you want them to stay in the audience?
You got, you got seats for them? Grab a seat. I don't think that precludes us continuing to ask the question, but we have lost all our leverage in asking them, so.
Okay, at this time, we're opening up all meetings and the housing authority meeting, mayor?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tem Loa?
Here.
Councilmember Director, Members Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Directors, Members Correa?
Here.
Councilmember Director, Member Bishop?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Fregasans?
Here.
We have a quorum for both the housing authority and all the other agencies.
Great, okay, so number eighteen, uh, continue from the June second meeting, joint public hearing of the council, successor agency, industrial development authority, Palmdale Airport Authority, Palmdale Civic Authority, Palmdale Financial Authority, and the Housing Authority. industrial development authority, Palmdale Airport Authority, Palmdale Civic Authority, Palmdale Financial Authority and Housing Authority. Yeah, go ahead, somebody wanna read that? Or is? Do we, do we wanna read the joint resolution at this time or do the presentation first?
We do the presentation first.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council and commissioners, my name is Marie Ritchie and I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual budget for adoption. On May nineteenth, we held a budget workshop and heard your suggestions to add into the budget. So our approach in going into this was to create programs that are equitable and sustainable to support our diverse community. We focused on investments in housing, jobs, education, youth development, community centers and open spaces. We have a public employee commitment to the future of our city. And we have made disciplined and responsible spending decisions utilizing data to drive decision-making and considering return on investments where applicable. As we enter a time of unprecedented economic disruption and civil and political unrest, we've made a lot of pivots in the last couple weeks to address these concerns. We started with these principles and as a living document, we anticipate our objectives will change as we navigate the new fiscal year. From all this, we've devised a strategic plan for the city to move forward. The vision for our strategic plan is to be a high-performing organization, providing world-class service that enhances the quality of life through innovation, passion, engagement and collaboration. We have four main goals to achieve that. The first goal being maintain effective public safety and protection for life, property and the environment. Our budget has community safety programs for two point seven million, neighborhood and business watch programs for two hundred and twenty thousand. Prepared Palmdale for emergencies plans, two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Public safety, police and animal control for thirty million. Communications outreach for two hundred and ten thousand and a legislative presence and outreach for fifty thousand.
Do you prefer questions at the end of the presentation?
Whenever you'd like.
Uh, I have a question on the uh community safety programs and um safety for our residents. In light of what has happened, um I want you guys to think about allocating funds for security systems or in our public spaces. Uh, not only in city facilities, but in parks and everywhere else where our kids and families are gonna be visiting for recreational purposes and um services that we provide.
I think we were starting to have that discussion and I think the city manager has a plan to put out an RFP, and I think it's included, it's, it's.
That's why I bring it up and I think that it's something that uh we should all be aware of those conversations. Because if we were all aware of that, then I wouldn't be making these requests. Uh, I think it's important for us to um allocate additional funds for the safety of our residents. Uh, again, uh not only will we provide uh municipal services, but recreational facilities as well. Since you mentioned you already had those discussions.
Well, no, JJ and I talked earlier about this.
Why?
And that's why it's included in here so we can, it, it's coming up, you'll, you'll see what he added in there.
Well, it has to be, well, okay, anyway, cheers on what I've been there.
Are there any more questions on this slide? Goal two is to ensure long-term fiscal health of the city and maintain funding for services. We have revenue consultants to bring on for a hundred thousand, sales tax, property tax, business license consultant for five hundred thousand. Our auditors for seventy-five thousand and we've made reserve contributions in the amount of five point five million. Goal three is to invest in infrastructure to improve community livability. Our building and safety programs are two point two million, our CIP programs are over fourteen point four million. Maintenance of streets, landscapes and facilities is twenty-five point seven million. We have five G implementation for a hundred and fifty thousand. Innovation and technology development infrastructure for two point four million. We have planning initiatives for just over a million and affordable housing programs for one point eight million. Goal four is to maintain a desirable community where everyone wants to live, work and play. Recreational services are budgeted in the amount of two point five million, we have Drytown Water Park operations for one point four. Organization and professional development for our employees in the city for five hundred and seventy-four thousand. Library services in the amount of one point three million. Events and culture for one point eight million and affordable housing facilities for seven point two million.
I have a question on events and culture, um is that amount allocated typically what has been allocated in the past? The reason I bring that up is because of what we are experiencing with COVID, a lot of these, a lot of events uh are being not held. Um, is this amount what has been typically been allocated? Is this a rollover from what we did not use in the previous fiscal year? Uh, where is this amount coming from?
This is the proposed amount for fiscal year twenty twenty-one beginning July first. We chose not to reduce it because we are going to shift our priorities to make sure there are enough, there are enough uh events for our residents to consider. So they, the staff are currently looking at um drive-in events or virtual events to be held and different ideas to roll out to the community rather than to postpone all activities.
Is it then safe to say that if we don't have these events, if this gets extended? Then do we consider that a rollover to the next fiscal year? Or you know, I'm sure it all depend on how we are fiscally in the next year. But my point is if none, if not this full amount is used, because we won't be able to do the events. Um, then that comes back to the council to see the amount gets rolled over, or it's just a, a new slate, as they would say.
So what we plan on doing is every quarter bring forth our financials to determine whether the revenues we had projected are coming in and reevaluate our expenditures and adjust them accordingly. So if the revenues aren't coming in as expected, we'll expect to see cuts in expenditures to match up to make sure we have enough funding for the rest of the year. If the events aren't being held and we don't see any other priorities to shift those funds to, you'll see that those costs will be reduced as well for consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
So we understand that with each unique situation, a plan should cater to those needs. For that reason, the Palmdale Renaissance Plan was created to address those specific challenges that we've been facing the, the last few months. Part of the twenty twenty-one budget's been allocated to accomplish this particular mission. To those history buffs, the Renaissance area era was a period of cultural, artistic, political and economic rebirth. We all felt that this was a very appropriate way to describe our emergence from this precarious times and continue to push forward for the community. So goal one of the Renaissance Plan, oh, sorry, I'll read the mission statement for you. It's intended to energize and reinvigorate Palmdale through cutting-edge forward thinking that unleashes the innovative and imaginative potential of the community to produce positive lasting results. Goal one is continued delivery of services that ensure safety and security of the community. So we have the neighborhood homes and gardens for thirty-six thousand. Personal protective equipment distribution for a hundred and fifty thousand. Parks and facilities like Legacy Commons for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Homelessness programs for two hundred and fifty thousand and a security assessment and implementation plan for five hundred thousand. So that's just the beginning of what we plan for the city. We wanted to make sure that there was funds to get this process started and make sure we do a comprehensive overview of the entire city and, and acquire the equipment that we need and really vet the whole process of what we're um installing. That'll last us for the next five and ten years and keep up with new technology.
I wonder if that gives us a chance to work with other agencies uh as far as security? Because I'm sure that school districts also want to have secure facilities for their students, our kids. Um, is that something that we would be looking into, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, yes, that's a natural fit, I can tell you in the last two communities I worked in, uh, there was a uh, a blending of the technology, so I will be in touch uh if passed tonight and directed by council, in touch with the school district as part of this security assessment to look at where we can share data so that when our uh officers are responding to an incident in a school, a school shooting, they have direct situational awareness of what they're walking into. And as uh, for instance, if shooter was wearing an orange, Richard, uh San Francisco Giants jersey. I, I messed up today when I tried to make the local comparison, uh, we can give that, that, those officers responding would have up-to-date situational awareness as they're going in. In a fire, same type of thing that we'd have that capability, so uh I think there's value added and there could be potential cost savings, so I'll find out the vendor that the school district use, the camera system they're on, so that we have compatibility in whatever we're gonna go through.
Think that's a natural fit since our interest, us all electoral officials, is to provide security for residents. And if we can partner with those other agencies, that would make much more sense uh to work cohesively than working independently. Because that would just make sense.
Yeah, there may be uh, uh, they, they may have their own plan, well, I can tell you, I know they have their own plans. And, but I think that if there's, uh, like you say, if there's technology, equipment or personnel where we could uh uh where there could be a shared resources there, I think that needs to all be part of that RFP process as well.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Goal two of the Renaissance. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to point out too that the, the schools, uh, the principals each year will reach out because they have to do their security plans, they do reach out to the sheriff's department and we provide them um crime stats and information about not just their school, but the neighborhoods around their school. So they, they are reaching out with their own security plans also, um, I just want to let you know that the sheriff's department does help them with that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thanks.
Marie?
Goal two of the Renaissance Plan is to restore the long-term fiscal health of the city and local businesses. So a lot of these programs will focus on trying to get everybody back on their feet and help the city recover as well. We've budgeted small business grants in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rental and mortgage assistance for four hundred and fifty thousand. Operation Jump Start is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Engagement with the Chamber of Commerce in the Antelope Valley for fifty thousand. And more revenue consultants for fifty thousand. And just so you know, you'll, you'll see revenue consultants for both the Renaissance Plan and the Strategic Plan. These consultants are more of our FEMA in helping us recover funds for all, everything that we spent in response to the emergency. And we wanna recover those funds again.
This couldn't come at a better time right now for our residents and business ownerses. We kinda move forward here into a, into a kinda like the, the new way of doing things and, and and everything we're, we're headed to, like the, what we talked about last time about the res- you know, as a possible recession coming and the unemployment benefits coming out for those who run out of assistance or, or haven't gotten any assistance yet, this is definitely a a second net that I think we should be providing our residents. So I wanna thank staff for, for getting on this and putting it together.
Are there, are there supplemental unemployment benefits in this?
No.
No, oh, okay, uh, okay.
Not, not for unemployment, but for people who run out of it though, you know, cause it's not a one-size-fits-all, not everyone was able to get the help they needed or whatever help they needed might be running out, so they're gonna need additional help. Especially those who work in the service industry.
Mayor, I also wanted to point out, while this is the budget, we've also spent money in this fiscal year on some of these same programs. So I don't want the residents out there thinking this is the only thing we're doing. We've already had two hundred and seventy-five thousand in Operation Jump Start, we've al- we've really had a surplus in the food we provide, it saves everything we've done with the test site, Legacy Commons. I think our employees have stepped up across the board with the support of council, so uh, I don't want anybody reading this and thinking this is our only recovery pro-plan, this is phase two.
Phase two of it, set, next step.
Thank you.
Right, okay, I did, I, I thought I was hearing that we had some sort of direct benefit program there and I, I didn't see that when I went through here, so. Alright, Marie?
Goal three is to ensure appropriate allocation of resources for continued services. We have land use code enforcement, software upgrades for a million dollars. Space utilization study of city hall facilities for fifty thousand. Employment profesh- employee professional development opportunities for a hundred thousand and investments for filming opportunities for an additional hundred thousand dollars.
Do you have any idea when this land use code enforcement and software upgrades will take place? Uh, as far as that the uh land use program for permitting?
We are currently preparing an RFP to be put out to the public so that we can bring in proposals and take a look at a software system to be implemented.
Can we pay some attention to who we select because it's been three years? Uh, and we haven't been able to provide.
It's been, it's been a debacle, so.
So we can be diligent in selecting the right partner this time.
Everybody's got a software solution and they're happy to sell it to you.
Yes.
Find something that's been working elsewhere, well, so.
Absolutely. Lastly is goal four, to promote a positive spirit to establish a stronger sense of community pride in Palmdale. Recreation programs for a hundred thousand and these are more focused on virtual kind of things or new things that we can add on to our current roster of programs. Virtual town hall meetings for mental health, definitely more social programs for our community to feel involved and be engaged. Saves food distribution for two hundred and fifty thousand. The library again for one point three million, Drytown Water Park is still gonna operate although late in the game in opening. And then the census for a hundred thousand dollars. So those programs were a combination of both general fund and all other funds throughout the city that we utilized to put programs together. But in reality, the general fund is our most difficult fund to handle. Um, we were able to go back and sharpen our pencils after the first meeting and our employees, our union employees agreed to take a one thousand dollar payment in lieu of their two percent COLA increase that they were afforded in their MOU. Our unrepresented employees too will forego a two percent increase and take a one thousand dollar payment. And lastly, all our managers, directors and executives have agreed to freeze their salaries and not take any increases nor a one thousand dollar payment. That resulted in a savings of over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the city in the long term. What you see here in year one is a five point four million dollar deficit. When we came forward during the workshop, it was almost eight million dollars. That still leaves us with almost ten million dollars in surplus reserves in case our revenue projections do not come in as expected. In working with our consultants, we do anticipate effects to our um property taxes. And we also know that retail's gonna have a much more difficult time coming back. And over thirty-three percent of our sales tax is reliant on consumer goods. In year two, if we continue on this course and not make any other drastic decisions and continue with the programs that we have in place now, you'll see that we'll utilize another seven point three million dollars out of reserves. And year three is when it becomes very dire, we'll actually eat up half of our reserves. And if we don't make immediate decisions at that point, we will deplete our reserves by year four. And that's probably when we're gonna see most of the effects of property tax, which make up over thirty percent of our revenues in general fund.
So the one quick question on the heading, just for clarification. Uh, I'm used to seeing year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, on year five, is that twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty-five, twenty-six?
It'll be twenty-four, twenty-five. So when you see fiscal year twenty twenty-five, that's June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Thanks.
And that is the end of the budget presentation. We have our directors here to answer any specific questions you have on programs. And I just want to recognize all the staff because they put a lot of heart and soul into relooking at all these numbers. They're all completely committed to the community and the city to make sure that we serve our community like we should and help us get out of these times.
Yeah. I don't have questions for the directors, I just wanna thank you for realizing these are difficult times and not um agreeing to not take uh an increase. Also, the um, represent- Also, the um representative employees and the union for the negotiations. Uh, I I I acknowledge the difficult times or the decision. That they took by foregoing the two percent or three percent, whatever that contract said. And taking at one time a thousand dollars instead. Um, I've stated in the past that I'm optimistic, things will turn around. We've gone through a lot of different things. Um, nine eleven and other types of disasters that really set back municipalities. This is unprecedented, I know that, we don't know where this is gonna go, but I still believe that we'll come through it. And once we get um better times, um, we will all be able to look back and and see the sacrifices that we all took. Um, to get us to a better future, not only for city employees, for for the residents and business owners and the entire nation. Um, thank you for doing that, staff and represented uh and union um negotiators for doing this. Yes, I I commend the hard work of uh staff, uh it does take a lot of work to put these numbers together. Uh, and again, I look forward to better times for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're just starting to see the beginning of it, you know, the uh. Uh, tax guys and some of the seminars that I've been sitting in on, I've been telling you, you know, basically it's been, you ain't seen nothing yet. You know, so that's uh, you know, um. Gotta. It's real, it's really obvious that we start getting into trouble if we don't uh, don't find something uh, something else to. Get rid of that red, so.
Yeah, we gotta, we we definitely need to be careful as we as we head into the future because we know our tax base is gonna be shrinking due to the. Uh coronavirus outbreak, so we know we're gonna have to adjust, uh, we're gonna have to adjust our our government or organization to the size. As as the future, you know, as the future comes along, and then when when things get better, we'll be able to. We'll be able to add more services again when the economy gets better, but I I firmly believe during these times, our. Our government should be focused on making sure we support our residents and our our current taxpayer any way we can.
Yeah, well, you you gotta have staff, you gotta have programs to do that, so all it takes is money. Uh, Laura, you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
We have notes all over there.
Well, there's more questions here than I think time allows, but uh. Uh, just on the capital improvement programs and maintenance of streets, landscaping facilities and the Palmdale Strategic Plan. And uh, almost all of that money is is outside of the general fund, right? It's all gonna be coming in from grants and other other sources?
Yes, so we receive metro funds for like Prop A, Prop C, park development funds, uh sewer funds, things like that, that mostly pay for it. Because general fund is so limited, we always look for alternative resources to maintain our infrastructure, especially when it comes to streets and roadways.
We gotta be careful about relying on metro because we thought we were getting another twenty two million dollars that they. Uh, all of a sudden behind the scenes got sucked back and there's been a bunch of us working night and day to try to salvage that. So I think we found some creative solutions, but if you're not, you know. It's not like magic money, so can't can't depend on them doing this right for us because they're gonna do what's right for them.
And looking at page six of uh the report to mayor and council. Uh, for the year twenty twenty one, it shows a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars of capital, I guess that's capital improvements. The bottom line there.
Yes, so we do still have some facilities that we cannot defer, so they're like improvements to the cultural center, the lighting. And there's a other, a couple other city facilities that need improvements that there is no other funding source that can pay for it, but they need to take place for safety reasons.
Okay. And then uh, the sales tax projections are based on the current sales tax level? That's not assuming any increases, right?
No, it's not assuming any increases and the way we reevaluated it was go quarter by quarter, industry by industry. And working with our sales tax consultant HDL and what's going on with the state. That's how they um came up with their projections, also taking into account a number of bankruptcies that have been announced and when they'll be. Whether they're restructured or whether they are liquidated, those are factored into our projections as well.
You're talking about local businesses?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing to consider with this is if we end up doing the uh sales tax measure, which was not taken into account. That would considerably um help in the tax revenue for the city, if that's the the decision that I wanna go.
So I I'm gonna circle back on Richard's comment about the capital improvements. So here here's where I'm having difficulty with cap- some of these capital improvements. Uh, about a year or so ago, we were told that. Um, that the McAdam restrooms are gonna cost us maybe quarter of a million dollars. And it's up over eight hundred thousand, and I will buy breakfast for everybody in this room if that isn't, doesn't hit a million bucks. And I'm trying to figure out, and I keep asking the question, and at some point, and that's why I'm bringing it up here, because I've asked this question. Several times and it hasn't been answered, so now you're all gonna hear the question. I wanna know what triggers, uh, you know, like six hundred thousand dollars worth of ADA. On a two hundred thousand dollar bathroom. Uh, I know that there's triggers out there, I know that it's supposed to be somewhat proportionate to the work that's going on. And um, the 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 response I got was, well, we touched the building. So I'm trying to figure out if we change a light fixture, does that trigger six hundred thousand dollars? Well, I think the answer to that is no, well, if we replace all the toilets, does that trigger it? And, well, you know, there could be some, well, somewhere in between there is a threshold. I need somebody to get back to us with that, because if we're looking at these, at 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 projects like this. And we're talking about uh triple the cost for those bathrooms. Um, I it that's, I mean, that that just. That flabbergasts me, I did a lot of inspection work and I I had a lot of work after the fact where people came back and said. You know, hey, if I, I have to upgrade these uh bathrooms because we're uh, you know, we're uh an inch too tall. Uh, you know, on our, on our toilets in here, and uh, you know, my solution was buy some thick tile and put it down. Because it's gonna cost you a million dollars to replace that bathroom. So at some point, I gotta, I gotta have somebody over. Maybe in Public Works or, you know, the ADA guru or something, has gotta let us know where that trigger is because we're okay in stuff. And it was, it's been kind of blind because I don't think anybody uh expected, you know, a triple cost. Tripling of that cost, so. That's what worries me about that capital number that, I mean, that. What's next, kind of where the question comes up.
So we should be more careful, asking staff to be more careful in change of change orders. When a uh project is presented, they give us a an estimate, but then uh contractors finds uh creative ways to come back with a change order. So I think that we just need to be more cautious about um who we select and who we have good experiences with as far as uh contractors. Um, that could be one factor.
Yep.
And there could be many others as well.
Uh, I've done that work where there's a no change order clause in the contract, that if uh. There's something that comes up that the contractor didn't anticipate and it's gonna cost more, he's gotta eat it because. He's supposed to be the expert, so, so sometimes we get stuck with stuff and we end up paying for it and it's. This is the public's money, so, but I just, I just worry when I see a number for capital and I I just saw one project that just got tripled, so. And and I'm, I'm afraid it's gonna be quadrupled before we're done, so. All right, thank you. Didn't mean to rain on your parade there, Richard.
That's all right, I mean, it raises important questions, but uh very little money in general fund to take care of it, and so we're gonna be relying on. On these grants and then other sources to meet this rather, I think. Inappropriately so ambitious uh program to maintain our our infrastructure for our city. Uh, but I hope it pans out, I think a lot of this is. On um, I guess uh, well, based guesses, right? Cause we don't know what's gonna happen as we go forward. What's that now?
Have the shiniest crystal ball.
One on my shelf in my office if we need it.
But anyway.
Hasn't been working well the last few weeks.
Anyway, so um.
Chris, you have uh anything you'd like to add relative to uh housing issues?
Yeah, as far as I can come right off, and thank you to all the staff and council members for, you know, bringing us through these times.
No, I agree with you.
All right, so JJ, is there anything else you wanted to add on that, or do we wanna have um? Do we, do we have any public comments on this item? City clerk?
No public, no public comments on it.
I just would like to thank uh Marie and the finance department and the staff, it's been a transition. And uh, we totally changed the way we presented the budget, we did not wanna. Uh, bore you, but we invested in what we thought were the important projects so that the public. Can not just look at grids and numbers and they can actually see what they're getting, and I think that was a very innovative way to present the budget. And I'd like to give all the staff credit because they were used to doing something for years and. Marie came in and and we said, no, we're gonna change this, we're gonna put our stamp on it, and I appreciate the council's support as well.
No, I appreciate that because usually what we got was a, you know, we 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 get a PowerPoint, you know, a day before and. This is what we're getting, you know, so I I I have a much better understanding of. Um, of of this process, uh of your process, and I also appreciate the fact that. The general fund has been very well clarified because there was so much, you know, there was like the, all these shells on a table that the P was being moved around under. And, you know. You know, we're we're not, we're not uh economic wizards and trying to follow that got uh dizzying, so.
I wanna thank uh all staff.
Yep.
And you, Marie, for your leadership, to the city manager for coming up with uh innovative ways to uh try to. Reduce uh the impact of uh what's going on right now. I wanna thank the city, uh the employees of the city, both representative and nonrepresentative for agreeing to forego their two percent COLA increase. And taking instead a thousand dollar payment, which is going to at least save us. Uh, considerable amount of money, two hundred and seventy six thousand, so thanks to the employees for doing that. And thank you for working that out, JJ. So we're going into uh probably very rough waters as far as budgets and resources and. Revenues and expenditures are concerned, but uh with your leadership, I think we'll weather the storm.
So there's a uh staff recommendation to adopt joint resolution number CC twenty twenty dash zero seven zero. SA twenty twenty zero zero eight, PCA twenty twenty zero zero one, IDA twenty twenty zero zero one. PAA twenty twenty zero zero one and PFA twenty twenty zero one. Approving and adopting city of Palmdale's budget for fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Approving revenue expenditure adjustments to fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve as president.
Second.
Have a motion in multiple seconds, can we have a?
So mayor, let's, can we do first a motion to approve the uh joint agencies and then second we will do a motion for just the housing authority?
Right, that's, that was the one I read, was the joint agency one.
Okay. Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair, Chair Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, and do I have a uh motion to adopt joint resolution HA twenty twenty dash zero zero three perhaps, Chris? Yeah, there was a motion? Okay, do I have a second? Okay, you have a motion in a second?
Chair Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettencourt?
Yes.
Commissioner Corio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasance?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Very good, and with that, will it join, adjourn the housing authority meeting? Before you guys leave, uh let um, think about, it's coming up not too long from now. There's another build coming up over at the uh veterans housing.
Oh, great.
Okay, I just got the word, it's talk to Danielle tonight, okay? Yeah, well, you'll be better by then, trust me.
I hope.
We'll find something easy for you to do, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you for letting me be here. I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, be careful. Okay, we're at uh item number twenty one, that item is continued to um, time uncertain or?
July fourteenth, it says here.
Oh, okay, July fourteen. Excellent.
Do we have to make a motion on that or just happens automatically?
I think they, I think they uh, did what, how do we do that? Noel, do we wanna, do we need to formally um?
Or what was the question?
To continue uh that appeal?
Number twenty one.
Uh, you can just make a quick motion to continue.
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to continue item twenty one point one, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry. Do you need to do that?
Okay, um, Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair, Chair Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Ben, uh Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Director, Member Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, the items continue, okay, and uh. New business. Um.
Number twenty two, right?
Yeah, there's never is, did you ever work for us?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Uh, what you have before you is a first amendment to the employment agreement between the city of Palmdale and John J. Murphy, city manager. Agreement number A dash six eight four three. Um, at the June second, two thousand twenty city council closed session meeting, Mr. Murphy offered to forego his first merit increase per section three. Salary of his employment agreement, Mr. Murphy may be eligible for a salary increase in two thousand twenty one and twenty three. The first proposed change is to extend the first salary increase from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two. The second proposed change to the agreement is to increase the tuition reimbursement per fiscal year from five thousand to fifteen thousand. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the council? Do we have any um? Do we have any uh public comment on this item?
None were received.
Yeah, none were received, so any any uh comments from the council or motion?
So moved.
Moved or approved, and we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, from uh Mr. Corio. Um, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt? Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Excellent, item the twenty two point two.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, um. As part of what has been described as phase two of our our relief and recovery efforts um related to COVID. Uh, I present to you tonight what we call Palmdale Al Fresco, which in Italian means outdoor dining. Uh, before I begin, I do wanna thank uh numerous members of our city staff, we actually had seven different departments and divisions. Um, submit input into this program, this truly was a uh collaborative effort of staff and what it showed me. Is we have a lot of city staff here that cares deeply about the community and deeply about our businesses and deeply about. Uh, those businesses that will be directly affected by this, our restaurants, our food and beverage um industry. Um, so Palmdale Al Fresco. Um, as we begin, I just wanted to point out, we have a hundred and sixty four food and beverage businesses in our city that were. Uh, affected in some way by mandatory COVID nineteen closures, a hundred and twenty nine restaurants, twenty one bakeries, twelve coffee shops. And two breweries, just to give you a idea of the scope tonight of what is possible, um, you know, what is a possible outcome for this program. Um, you know, what is a possible outcome for this program? Uh, in early, early in mid-May, uh the state and county began reopening, its process of reopening. What came out of that were guidelines um for the food and beverage industry to follow. Among those that was troubling for a lot of these restaurants is um dining occupancy was limited to sixty percent of the prior seating capacity. Six feet social distancing is required. And from the state guidelines, it did state that tables and chairs must be removed from dining areas where six feet of physical distance cannot be maintained. For customers and employees. Uh what you saw and what we reached out to in speaking with a lot of these businesses, um. You saw smaller dining rooms be really affected by this and um. A lot of restaurants where you have the booths built into the restaurant where they cannot be moved, they cannot be separated. Many of those restaurants were losing key floor space in which they're able to serve uh their patrons um as they come in. Although one of the recommendations though coming out of LA County um emphasized outdoor seating. Uh noted that outdoor seating should be prioritized and expanded where possible to maximize six foot social distancing. And what we've seen as a result is what we like to call Palmdale Al Fresco, Al Fresco, Palmdale's outdoor dining program. Um, it allows these restaurants really two benefits. Number one is to expand it outdoor seating. Uh Palmdale Al Fresco allows businesses to temporarily expand seating to off-street parking areas and sidewalks. There are some cities throughout California, I just wanna note, that decided to either close down streets or allow seating out onto the roadway. We made the conscious choice not to um for safety reasons of our patrons. And just discussing it with uh some businesses and really taking a look at what our city needs and how our city. Can put forth a more effective program. The other portion of it is obviously within that expanded outdoor seating, um it allows businesses to temporarily expand alcohol service within this outdoor area. The program has three general guidelines um that we've set up to be very business friendly and very accessible and easy to understand. Number one is we ask businesses to submit a no-fee temporary application. Um, this application would be uh simple, a few pages just describing what their proposal is. As well as a site plan depicting the location of the proposed space and the dining area so that we can ensure that. Uh take a second look and ensure compliance and safety regulations are followed. Number two in the program, we um do property owner permission. A consent, simple consent statement is required to be completed when the proposed outdoor dining area is on property not owned by the applicant business. And number three, um I worked very closely with our uh local ABC office. And businesses with a conditional use permit from the city of Palmdale that wish to serve alcohol within the expanding outdoor seating area must. Not only comply with the ABC state regulations, but provide a copy of the ABC forms that are required to expand their license. Uh ABC, the Form two eighteen and two five three, uh copy to our city planning division. And this picture is actually taken at a, a suburb outside of Chicago um that did the program. I thought this is more beneficial because it gave, gave the council and the general public a idea of a very simple. Um, what a, what a simple kind of strip mall um look could be for uh some of our businesses. Um, so in rolling out this program, we wanted to ensure obviously safety and security um at all times. So we asked that uh restaurants that wanna take advantage of this program have temporary barriers or delineations. For safety of individuals within those proposed areas, as you see in the photo here is a perfect example of that. And it actually is a state ABC requirement as well. Um, that in order to expand your alcohol license, the ABC does require those same uh uh temporary barriers to be put up. Uh businesses, of course, are required to maintain compliance with uh our Americas with this, Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. Exits must not be blocked or enclosed, fire lanes and hydrants must be kept clear and accessible. And designated areas for loading or deliveries must be kept free and clear so that traffic is not impeded. Uh, among those, the final requirement is that obviously our, our state and uh federal um. Social distancing requirements, we're asking obviously the restaurants to continue to comply with those um within this uh seating area. And I am available for any questions that the council has. And then I will go ahead and do the formal reading of the resolution, just to check that box off as well.
So we have, uh, for instance, uh, the shopping center at Thirty-Fifth West and Rancho Vista Boulevard, the Vons. For any of the restaurants in that shopping center to apply, they would have to get the consent of the owner of the whole shopping center, right?
Yes, and we, that's correct.
But sometimes they can do that through the leasing agent, typically uh shopping center owners would have a leasing agent. Who would be authorized to sign for the property owner.
We do have a very flexible requirement there, we're not obviously, the council member's correct, we're not a- a- asking for the, the corporate owner. But whoever their manager is, landlord, whoever they talk to if they have any other day-to-day uh issues or problems at the resident. Or the property, they'd be able to go and uh speak to that individual, get them to sign.
They've been consulted and all about this, how they see it. I'm talking not, not, not so much a freestanding.
Can we mute, eh, whoever's on the phone there? Can we get the mics muted because we're just getting a lot of, a lot of chatter? Thank you.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just wondering about the, such as the one I pointed out. Where you have multiple restaurants and other businesses interspersed. How, how, how that would work out insofar as uh the property manager of, of a place like that? I mean, I think the idea is great. I'm just wondering if there's gonna be any issues presented because of. Uh differing points of view on how to manage the outside space of a particular place, of a particular restaurant.
Yeah, that's a good point because the, the restaurant will wanna bring it out on the sidewalk or put some barricades up there. And then you got the, for example, uh, maybe the, the water vendor next door. Wants to put a table out there with some little bears, cause Valentine's Day is coming up. And then he, he gets in trouble because that's not included here, so how we deal with that?
It's not a restaurant.
That's what I'm saying.
That, that, that is correct, it's not a restaurant, uh but I would say, I mean, there's only. The goal really in this program is to provide as, these businesses as many tools as possible to succeed. Obviously, this would be something that they would have to work out with um the property owners. We took, I took a look at fifteen other cities throughout California that have rolled out this program and made appropriate calls to their. City agencies to ask these questions and what I learned is that. A majority of the time, these property owners and these landlords are looking at their, their businesses and saying, what can I do to help? I obviously can't waive rent, I can't make that go away, but if I can make you more successful in any way and bring patrons to your business. That's the reception I found from talking to these other agencies. I obviously, we make no guarantees that all businesses throughout the city can do this. But we think at this time, rolling out a program like this would actually be uh. Well-received by both the uh local businesses and the property owners and. You know, to the extent that I can do my part, I will, you know, work to see if we can figure out a resolution just to help these businesses.
I think that's great because um, I, I go to a lot of restaurants. And uh, that's exactly what I'm hearing from these guys, they're going, I need a hundred and fifty percent of my business coming back. And I can put sixty percent and the way I had my seating set up in here, I can't even do that, you know? So uh, and I, I, I try to patronize a lot of the mom and pops and they're all looking for these solutions. But we need to be prepared because every reopening thing that we've done so far has been met with. My phone has blown up about why not me? Why am I not included in this? So I will be referring those over to your office to help find that solution, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Uh, Mr. Bettencourt? Mr. Bishop?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright, do uh, you need to read the resolution?
Yes, so uh before you tonight, resolution number CC twenty twenty zero point zero seven three. A resolution of the city council, the city of Palmdale authorizing and approving temporary modifications to the Palmdale municipal code. And or previously approved operational conditions of approval to provide outdoor dining, Palmdale's Al Fresco dining program. And just very quickly before I note, um, as you heard tonight, the uh, the budget was presented, this is a no fiscal impact item. This is really thinking outside of the box and, and really seeing what we can do as a city to help businesses.
Could be a positive fiscal impact.
Exactly.
Uh, increase in sales type.
So, you said, do you have something else you wanna add?
No.
Okay, alright, so were there any public comments received on this?
None were received.
None on this one, okay. So we have the resolutions in there, do I have a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve.
Mister three.
Second.
Mister Loa has a second, roll call.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Excellent. That brings us to item number twenty-three, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, alright, we're adjourned, thank you everybody, thanks for watching.